Six thirty two, if we could all stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will open public comment at six thirty two. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight? All right, that'll stay open for thirty minutes. We will have an ELO presentation. Bill, you wanna take over?
Can I take over forever?
Yep.
Um, so, a couple, a couple of things before we get to the ELO presentation. Actually, the last week in November, we had some music students participated in the Allstate Trias for the Allstate Festival. And we have three students that were accepted into this year's festival. Um, wanted to see it tonight, but let me just mention the other two. Ray Armstrong was accepted into the mixed choir on Tenor Voice. Ben Box was accepted into the band on the tuba. And also Ben had received the highest score in the state on tuba.
That's awesome.
Uh, but here tonight, just to be recognized as Colin Daly, who was accepted in the mixed choir on the Best Voice.
Awesome.
Alright, congratulations.
You wanna say a few things about the festival, or?
You have to come to the microphone then.
Yeah, come to the microphone, yeah.
Sorry.
I have one of my voice in bed right now.
Yeah.
I've had sixteen performances this year.
Oh, that's right.
And you were there last night too, right, uh, for the Rotary?
Uh, for the, uh, at the Rotary, yeah, I was here at the Rotary.
Yeah.
Rotary, yep.
Um, so the Allstate Festival in April takes place between April third through April fifth. It's a very rigorous festival it takes to get into. Uh, you prepare a audition art song in aria, and then you prepare a corral and excerpt from what was, um, My Mouth, Which One Could Smile. They do a rhythm and a melodic sight reading. Uh, Mr. Moore and Mr. Martin worked with both Allstate students, um, throughout the years and throughout the months to help them prepare for the festival. And it's very hard to get into. Very hard to get into, but luckily I decided to get into, including Ray and Ben, which sadly could not be here tonight.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
You are, that's awesome. Do you have any plans for the future?
Um, I wanna go into music education. I wanna become a chorus teacher.
Do you? Perfect, come back then. Awesome, well, we wish you all the best. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
And, um, I believe, uh, the choir is gonna come to us in the future. It was just that this time of year, they are very busy performing, so.
They're out straight.
Yes.
But we will see them back here.
Perfect.
Okay, um, also I will call down Matt Long and Mike Handwork to introduce the, one of the ELO presentations.
Are we good?
Yeah, it's good.
Hi, everybody. I'll just lean, I guess. Um, so my, my name is, uh, Matt Long and the ELO coordinator here at Winnicott. Um, I wanna just, uh, this is Mike Handwork, it also supports our ELO students. I wanted to just, uh, give the floor right to our students who will talk about two ELO experiences that they have participated in over the past year or so. So I'll start with Caleb Chamberlain.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Caleb. I participated in the trade program that we did with an ELO this past trimester. Basically, the program is a career exploration opportunity, and it was, uh, I wanna, I think it was twelve weeks, fifteen weeks. And we went through four of the major trades, plumbing, oil heat, electrical, and gas. Uh, a lot of it was about, like, meeting new people and meeting a lot of companies. I met with Legacy Plumbing, Hilti Tools, one of the biggest tool distributors in the world at the moment. Uh, it kinda changed my opinion on what I wanted to do. Originally, I started out, I wanted to be a mechanic. I went to SST for two years. And then from there on, I decided, I was like, this is more of a hobby than a future that I want for myself. So I got thinking, heard about the ELO and the career. Uh, I got talking with Mr. Long, met with Mr. Handwork, and got started in the ELO. And then we started on oil heat, made our way all the way to gas. And the one I found most interesting was plumbing. I learned a lot about plumbing, a lot more than I thought there was to plumbing. It's a, it's a big world.
It's more than on and off, right?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. I mean, we, we learned a lot of things. A lot of it was, uh, like, communication skills and, like, how to be a good plumber or good tradesman. Like, a lot of, like, the soft skills, like, as opposed to the hands-on stuff. We still did a lot of hands-on stuff. I wish there was a little more. But we, like, we braced copper, we played with a bunch of tools, we serviced an oil heating system. Uh, I just wish so, there's more lab time. Obviously, you can't fit that much into fifteen weeks when it comes to four of the major trades. So, not much to be expected there. But we, uh, we covered a lot of communication, like, how to bring yourself and put yourself out there for employers. We talked a lot on, like, what your next steps would be to become a plumber, for me at least, and, like, or electrician, or oil heat tech, or any of that. And I myself am planning on taking their Plumbing One-on-One class. It's an advanced skills class. I plan on doing it in May. I've signed up for scholarships to help me out with that. Uh, it's, uh, May thirteenth. It's an evening class, two days a week. And the goal of that class is to really just, like, make me stand out compared to the other applicants of a certain job. It'll allow me to get a better understanding of what plumbing is. So when I get an apprenticeship and I get a job, uh, I'll know what I'm doing, basically. And I'll have a better understanding and a better start.
Nice, awesome.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Any questions?
What's, what, what, what did you come away for soft skills?
I came away with a lot of, like, how to, like, put yourself out there. There was a lot of, like, um, like, networking and a lot of people meeting. Like, we went to career fairs with the L, uh, the ELO. Uh, almost every other day, once a week, a company or a business would come into the school and they'd talk with us. They'd talk, like, they, they're hiring, so we're the next generation of kids that are gonna fill those shoes. And so, like, a lot of it was, like, just how to present yourself and how to move forward with yourself when going into the trades. Kinda preparing you for the future. I really liked that.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll tell you, there's nothing better than eye contact and a good handshake. I'll tell you.
Yeah.
It'll get you far in this world, trust me. So, yeah, those soft skills are huge, but, that's awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for sharing.
Of course.
Any else have any comments?
No, it's great.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Alright, next on the mic is Brianna Tully, who is a senior, speaking about her internship at Portsmouth Hospital.
Hi, my name is Brianna Tully, and I'm sharing my experience with my ELO at Portsmouth Hospital, where I had the privilege to work in the emergency department and also shadow doc, shadow doctors in the OR. Throughout my internship, I observed how emergency teams work under a lot of pressure and how they use their critical thinking to save lives. During my time in the OR, I learned more about the focus and skills required while performing surgeries. I got a head start in learning protocols, um, med terminology, and how procedures work in general. But I also learned to be communicative and adaptable, as well as what is valued in healthcare workers, such as being calm and compassionate. My ELO helped strengthen my commitment and motivation to become a doctor, specifically in pediatric emergency medicine. I'm hoping to start college in the fall as a biochem major on the pre-medicine track, and my ELO prepared me and solidified my decision for this career path. And I wanna thank Mr. Long and the rest of the ELO, ELO department for providing opportunities like this.
Awesome. Good for you.
Can you tell us about any surgeries that you may have any observed?
I mean, maybe not in graft. Not the, not the, not the blood and gore, but the rest of it.
I watched a spinal surgery that was really cool. It started as them inserting discs into different spinal tracts, and they ended up finding a tumor, which was really unexpected, so that was a cool opportunity to be able to see it up close.
Wow.
Anything else?
That's awesome. Do you, do you know where you're going next year?
Um, not yet. I'm hoping, um, NC State or UNC, maybe somewhere in the research triangle, but, yeah.
Perfect. Well, continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also wanna just take the, a moment to thank our, our internship partners, HCA New England, which is the, the parent company of Portsmouth Hospital and the New Hampshire School of Mechanical Trades in Hampton. They, they do a lot to support our students and, um, it's, they really see the value of that workforce development and, and viewing these, our students as, you know, the next generation of workers and leaders. So, um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the backend on how we support students in ELOs. Um, we ask them to, to achieve four main products, or four main components, the first being a product. We'd like to see them apply their understanding of the learning that they've done to something real world that fits within the work of the business. So, for example, our internship students at Portsmouth Hospital did research with doctors and nurses and tried to solve a problem that currently exists within the hospital, along waiting times at the emergency room, um, you know, as, 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 also things like sepsis and specific medical conditions. Um, we also ask students to present their knowledge, so can they communicate in a context-appropriate way, with, using the right language to be able to communicate both the learning and the process. Um, to, to be able to reflect, set goals, that's a big thing in our portrait of a learner, to be able to say that, yes, I, I've achieved this, I haven't achieved this, and this is where I'm going in the short and long term. And then being able to research, so showing that students can collect information from sources, both in person, online, and effectively see if those are reliable sources. We do all these things through weekly skill-building meetings, continue communication with community partners, families, um, and the community at large to be able to really spread the word about these opportunities, make sure students are safe, um, having really strong learning experiences. Um, and this really puts students in the driving, the, the driver's seat of their own learning. So, um, I'll hand it off to Mike, who supports our ELO students as well, to talk a little bit about more of the impact on the, the student and teacher side.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to give you some of that teacher perspective and answer any questions. Being a classroom teacher for many years now, this is a really different experience for me, and I've, I've just really enjoyed it. Uh, the individualized learning is, I think, something you want to do with every kid when you have twenty-four, twenty-five biology students in front of you, for example. But you just don't have the time. And so, these weekly meetings that Matt referenced are just so valuable. Um, I wanna highlight some of those soft skills and some of the, the experiences they had, and just to really show you the difference. The relationship building is key, right? It's so important. We meet fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes a week, or as often as they might need if they have some additional requests, they want help on something. Um, so those weekly meetings are important to discuss their progress, uh, help them set short and long-term goals, you know, and they can check in on those goals. So, goal-setting is just so important for these kids as they're getting out into the work world. As a dad of three that are in middle school and high school, it's just things that you just want all your kids to have the, the access to, or like a mentor of sorts, so they're doing a great job there. Um, their communication skills are, are key, right? They have to know their audience. Am I in front of a nurse, a doctor, a future employer, or am I in front of my teacher? I think the teachers and the support team try to be more of an ally, they're, we're the cheerleader in their, in their corners. They can come and say, oh, I had this really, uh, this nurse was really cranky, I had a really tough time handling this person. But they were just super busy, so you try to highlight what they're maybe going through and help them work through knowing your audience and knowing, you know, when to just listen and when to, when to chime in. Um, so really important stuff. Problem-solving is key, right? Their deal, the kids are dealing with their own sickness, their own, uh, homework load, you know, how do you handle all that? Um, the different personalities in different businesses, um, their, their own scheduling conflicts. Uh, and I think Caleb mentioned networking is so important. I mean, he said he met ten or twelve different businesses and different people. The different healthcare people are meeting different doctors and nurses on different shifts, so they're seeing how that whole thing works. And they're walking out knowing that they can call someone and maybe get an internship, maybe get a summer job, or maybe when they come out of school, they have someone they can connect with. So it's just such great skills that you see these kids out in the real world learning. Uh, but it takes time, right? It's very individualized. I absolutely love it. It's changed some of the way I teach. You know, you try to connect even more with these kids when you're with them every single day. So it's just been such a great experience, and I wanna make sure you heard from that teacher's side of things, uh, how different it is and how, I think how valuable it is for the whole school community. But happy to take any questions too, if you were curious of some of their experiences, 'cause I help the healthcare folks, um, the trade school folks, and then there's some kids going to BAE Engineering and learning robotics, and just really cool experiences.
That's awesome. Any questions? I just appreciate the time that you put in for it too, you know, 'cause it is above and beyond, so it is well, um, well appreciated.
Well, thank you.
And I'm sure the students appreciate it, don't they? Yeah, so, yeah, for sure.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
So we have one more presentation. Um, Kira Martin-Biggs is gonna, uh, talk about our ELO about the Spock Literary Magazine, and I've got Catherine Ash and Kate McKenney, um, also the advisors.
Allison Cross.
And Allison Cross.
I do have a slideshow presentation. Is there anywhere we can pull that up?
Do you have your computer, or can you send it to me? Hmm?
She does, yes.
No.
Sure, I should, yeah. Yeah, okay, 'cause I, I can't hear.
Yeah, before we start.
I don't have it on. We did wanna give you all a copy of last year's magazine. I know we came last year, um, and you all enjoyed it.
Yes. Thank you very much. I love these. Thank you.
Ignore Mr. Curda, he took that picture. He posted it on our, on our Google classroom.
Does he really?
Yeah. He probably took a picture of our textbook and accidentally posted it.
Yeah.
Accidentally on purpose.
Accidentally on purpose, exactly. Blue John, yes.
So, we're here to talk about two different things today. Just give you guys an update about different things that we've been doing in the literary magazine this past year and the beginning of the school year, and I also did the ELO with the literary magazine first trimester, so I can talk a little bit about that. So just give you an update on all of our current staff members of the literary magazine. We have our lovely advisors, Ms. Ash and Ms. McKenney. And my name is Kira Martin-Biggs, I'm a senior. I am co-editor in chief, along with Ally. And some of our other members are, we have social media director Amelia Shannon, art editor Ozzy Almba, tech director Ian Oterson, PR director Kayla Hadok, managing editor Andrew Martin-Biggs, layout editor Tilly Corrier, and then some other members who help us with our layout design as well as reading and choosing pieces.
So, the, the number of people who submitted to the literary magazine, we had seventy-four people to submit, and out of that, we were able to publish, uh, forty-eight people's work.
And so. That's in the magazine we're looking at right now.
Yes, and, um, so far this year, we've had sixty-eight submissions that we're going through. So in addition to choosing what pieces go into the magazine, we also host events every once in a while. So we have, um, in the spring, we have our magazine distribution party, um, and then in November, we do, uh, Sparks Fly, which is a party where we all get together and, like, share written works. And then this year, or this week actually, the first, for the first time ever, we did a fundraiser, um, with holiday cards.
So, the magazine distribution party happened on May twenty-nine at the end of last year, and me and Ally emceed. And essentially, the purpose of the party, as the title implies, is to distribute the new edition of the magazine, mostly to published authors and artists in the magazine, but also anyone who wants one. And like the poetry reading that we do in the fall, we also had people read poems and short stories, and just generally had a fun time. And here's some pictures from last year's parties.
So Sparks Fly is a party that we do every year in November. It started off as a poetry party, so everyone would get together and share either their own poetry or just poetry that they like. And then this year, we changed it to just being, um, just celebrating any writing, so people could share poetry, or they could share, like, creative writing pieces. And again, it could be their own, or it could just be someone that they like. Um, it was all set up by our PR director Kayla Hadok, and then Kira emceed it. And that's kinda what it looked like. We usually do these in the library, and then we just have people go up to the front with, like, a podium and just read up there.
We had about thirty people to come to the party this year, including teachers, so it was a really good showing. And so this week, specifically, um, Monday, Tuesday for the most part, we did a holiday card fundraiser, which Ally has some cards, if you guys would like an example. But essentially, what the fundraiser is, is we took three different art pieces from submitters for the unreleased magazine, and we asked them if we would be allowed to use their art to sell cards. So basically, we made holiday cards for all of them, with three different types, and we had a table in the cafeteria where we sold to students. And then during Warrior Block, we rent, went around to all the different teachers and asked them if they would like to buy cards. In total, we have so far sold a hundred and sixty-four cards, and after the cost of the cards, we made a profit of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents. And this is, you guys can see the cards, but this is what they look like. Um, there's, maybe some of these three different types. Two of them are by seniors, one by Emerson Babbie, and one by Alex Lamerson, and one of them is by junior Kletney.
So how much did these sell for?
We did one for two dollars, um, and then we did bundles where we had, um, three for five dollars, five for seven dollars, and ten for fifteen.
Oh, these are really incredible.
They're beautiful, yeah, they're absolutely beautiful.
And then we have, um, we have an Instagram that's run by our social media director Amelia Shannon. Um, for that, we did an event called Inktober, and then we also did, um, just general updates about, like, the parties that we were putting on, um, when you're submitting, anything like that. So this is Inktober. Um, it has different prompts every day for either art or writing pieces. It can be one word, or it can be a question. It's just to try to get people to be creative, give them ideas of what to make, and then hopefully submit to us after. And we would, we posted the calendar, and then we also, every day on the story, we would post each individual's, uh, day, each individual day's prompt. And that's kinda just what the, um, Instagram looks like. And then we also put these up, we put magazines all around the school at the beginning of the year, just to try to get the word out. A lot of people, um, don't submit 'cause they just don't know that we're there, so we're trying to get the word out. They're putting up these posters. Um, and then we have the QR code there that people can scan that goes right to the website, so that they can submit right from there.
Before I get into my ELO, do you have any questions?
Did you bring any more cards with you? 'Cause I wanna buy some.
They're in Ms. McKenney's room, and I'm out there, I thought.
Police say orders today, but they can't be easily delivered.
They're really incredible.
Thank you, glad you liked them. It was a labor of love, love and thank you.
It's awesome.
Yeah, we were a little nervous, 'cause it was the first time we'd ever done a fundraiser for the magazine before, uh, but the whole club really came together to make it happen, so.
Yeah, it's such a great idea.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, you could get your pre-sales together for next year, and.
Yeah.
Not out of the park.
Yeah, and you could sell.
They probably sell a lot more.
And you could sell them at the craft fair we have right here.
It's true.
Yeah.
Right.
We're excited to use artwork from, um, that's all from the upcoming magazine, so.
Oh, great.
We're hoping it'll make people try to get the new magazine too.
Sure, absolutely.
Cool. What a great idea.
And so just to talk about my ELO a little bit, so I started planning my ELO at the end of last year, because I've been part of Lit Mag for two years now, and I was really passionate about it, but like Ally said, some very odd times where people don't know that we're there, and I felt like that was especially the case outside of the Winnicott community. So my ELO was typically centered around community outreach and trying to bring the magazine into places outside of the school. Specifically, libraries was my main focus, because I work at the Ley Memorial Library in Hampton, so that was the first place I thought of. And I want to study marketing in college, so I felt like this was a really good opportunity for me to learn more about that, use that knowledge, and then also do it for something I care a lot about. So, generally speaking, when it came to proposals for the magazine, I put together a written proposal with three main options. So the first option that I proposed is that they would have the magazines at the front desk when they first walk into the library, and then they would be able to be checked out. So as someone is checking out their books, it'd be like, oh, this magazine looks really cool, I'm gonna check this out too. Um, some other ideas I came up with were to put them with the regular magazine shelf, as well as with the newspapers, because some, depending on the libraries, sometimes some newspapers are a bit more visible. And so, like I said, I wrote the proposals for all these libraries, and then I emailed them to get in touch with them, and I met with all of them. So the libraries that I met with were the library in Hampton, in Hampton Falls, in North Hampton, as well as Seabrook. And each of these libraries ended up going with slightly different plans, which was interesting. So, the first library that I met with was my own, which is the Ley Memorial Library, and my boss decided to go with the front desk plan, so here's a little picture of what that looks like there. And I just made a little sign that says, um, it's a magazine that has artwork and written work all by Winnicott students. Um, and I would like to say that the magazine is very popular at work. They're all checked out currently. And it's really satisfying to me when I'm working and one of my coworkers is like, someone's asking about the magazine, will you explain it to them? This happened the other week, and I got to talk to her about it, and she was like, wow, this is so cool, you guys should sell these, it's really impressive, all the work that you do, which made me feel really good. And then the second library I met with was the Seabrook Library, and they decided to go with the magazine wall plan. So as you can see there, it's on a nice, it's on a wall for magazines, and they put a little sign just saying, like, what it was. The North Hampton Public Library decided to go with a little bit of, like, a changed approach, where they wanted to put it near their fireplace area, because a lot of people will sit down there and read newspapers and magazines. So I thought that was a really good idea, and it fits in well with what our vibe is, basically. So that's what it looks like there. And the last library that I met with was the Hampton Falls Free Library, and they also decided to go with the magazine wall plan, so you can see it there. That's what I got.
That's great. Awesome.
It's great.
Good. I, I know when you, when they came last time, we all talked about it, like, remember we were saying, getting it out into, like, the coffeehouses and things like that. Is there any plan for that?
Um, I think so. I, I think in the future, that would be a great idea. When I was starting my ELO, it was sort of like, a lot of planning was done in September, and by the time things, like, started being implemented, it was more October.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't necessarily feel like going to places like KB's, which are more popular in the summer, it was like the best seasonal idea.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we did do that, it would probably be, like, later in the spring that I would start talking to them. And also, because we had the, like, cards thing recently, and we've had a lot of stuff going on. But I also think that was another really great opportunity for me to do more stuff with marketing, with, like, the cards and, and sort of planning all that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm also doing another ELO this trimester for the yearbook, because Ms. Ash is also the yearbook advisor. So I'm planning to help with different events for the yearbook as well.
Nice.
So.
I think they're beautiful.
Yeah.
I do too.
They're really, really impressive.
Yeah, they are.
Glad you liked them.
We do. I'm just gonna keep the donation, 'cause I'm stealing the cards.
Thank you.
Get some money too. Come, come by and get some.
Lovely, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you. Huh? It's beautiful. Those are beautiful, huh?
It's like the coffee shops, it's like great.
Leslie.
Oh, look at.
What is this one?
My god, yeah.
Unreal.
Alright, uh, next we have, uh, Winnicott Pride, Zoe. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight. Merry Christmas. I could get some more cards before Christmas.
Do you know what that is? That, Patrick, this is pearler beads.
What is it?
Pearler beads. You know the beads you put on in Melton?
Oh my god, yeah. Yeah, that's what that is?
I think that's what that is.
That's amazing.
It looks like it down towards the corner.
I don't know. Oh, there it is, yeah. I think you're right.
It's unbelievable.
It is crazy. The talent is amazing.
Yes, it's, Leslie, mine.
Alright, sorry, go ahead, Zoe.
So, everyone's excited for break in a few days.
No.
Student council put on a winter spirit week this week. We had pajama day on Monday, winter gear day on Tuesday, ugly sweater day today, whiteout day is tomorrow, and then holiday color slash accessory day is Friday.
Ooh, accessory day.
What's, what is whiteout day?
Um, also on Friday, we're working with the lookup committee to have a phone-free Friday, and we're playing some fun games for lunch. And we're also planning an unplug challenge in collaboration with a school in California for next month.
Oh, really?
I was very excited.
Oh.
Um, we're also working on a winter pep rally for January, and at the moment, the senior class is having their raffle fundraiser, and it's going very well for them, so.
Great.
It's great. Um, the holiday concert was. Um, the holiday concert was December twelve. And the staff are putting on their faculty show this Friday also, so that'll be exciting. And then for sports, they're all in full swing, going good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, minutes. Does anybody have any, um, changes or anything to the minutes, and if not, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November twentieth, regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm standing.
Thank you. We have our superintendent SAU report.
Okay, uh, I'm not gonna read all of the reports. I think, um, Zoe made a good point that people are very excited to have a break. I have certainly felt that. Um, we have wrapped up the budget process here, as has the Winnetka Budget Committee. So, um, public hearing will be coming up in January, followed by deliberative session in February. Um, I did point out the Seco School of Technology open house that occurred recently. Um, and I know there was a visit, I think sophomores were visiting last week, maybe, SST? Or maybe it's coming up, but recently.
It's coming.
Um, so again, great opportunities there. We heard one of our students, that kind of sparked an interest in pursuing an ELO on a slightly different track. But again, it's, it, the great opportunities in high school are to explore those things that might be of interest to us and figure out what those pathways might look like, and it's a good opportunity to try things on. So, um, if you're interested in learning more about SST, reach out to your guidance counselor. Or any staff member I'm sure would be happy to point you in the right direction. Um, policy committee will be coming up in January. Uh, and we hope, uh, at some point also in January, we'll be hosting our legislative roundtable. Uh, we haven't finalized a date for that yet, but we are in process for that. Couple things to point out from, um, Dr. Toomey's report. Um, it's a, it was a couple of weeks ago, but it's, it was inclusive schools week, so just, um, the theme was that every individual has a unique perspective and contributes to the rich tapestry of our school communities. Um, so there were some activities that took place to really promote, um, including all members of the school community. And then, um, the other piece that was included, um, was from Dr. Cassely, just about the importance of reading. Um, and just the substantial difference between reading one minute a day, five minutes a day, or twenty minutes per day, and how that impacts your vocabulary, um, and exposure, um, to words and how it can impact achievement over time. And I know, um, the number one thing I have heard from, um, folks in higher education is that high school students coming in need to be prepared for the stamina of having to read a lot of material in relatively short periods of time, right? It's different, it looks different than it does in high school in terms of the pacing of that. Um, and so carving out a little time to read every day is important. I will end there.
Thank you. Uh, principals' report.
Very brief, uh, basically we received three donations. Um, the, uh, Groundswell Tradibles Foundation, uh, care of Stephen and Christina Boye donated six hundred and thirty-four dollars to support Winnetka students in need. Uh, Dan Healy donated two Celtic game tickets valued at four hundred and thirty-two dollars to the class of twenty twenty-five for their senior banquet fundraiser. And then through the Hattaford Help School program, we received three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, to support student activities.
Awesome, thank you.
Enrollments and, um, I think like everybody says, we're just looking forward to, um, school vacation and, um, and we'll mention anything for the new year yet.
Okay, sounds good.
Except that we come back Thursday, January second.
But only for two days.
Only for two days.
That's just to make it not a full two weeks, so we can keep our mental sanity as parents, so thank you.
Right. That's exactly what it is. I love it. Uh, curriculum report. Donna?
So like everybody, I'm anxious. So I won't bore you by reading the whole report, I know it's lengthy, but, um, what I'm trying to figure out is how to present the information to you. So I, I, I wanna give you data every month, um, and under my direct supervision, as I mentioned before, I have, uh, the ELO program, Matt Long. Um, I, um, work with Kate Gubbins, our library media specialist, and our technology integrator. And so every month as we meet, one of my things that, that I've been trying to get us more in the habit of doing is looking at data and making decisions based on that, and I know I've mentioned that several times. Um, so I wanna be able to present that to you. So I'm finding different ways to like share that with you, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but please, that will always be there for you so you can see some of the trends that we are examining and whether that needs to change any of our practice as we move forward. So I just think it's a, a good thing, and, and it's a good thing to keep you informed, but if there's a different way to present that, I'm, I'm all ears. And, um, it does look like the, the report is lengthy, but that's why. And also at the end, I wanted to point out that Julie Hall also is an advisor for Project Search. And if you're on our social media, you probably saw some posts about that, but I wanted to highlight. And my plan every month is to sort of highlight something like that so you can see some of the fun things that we're doing as well as an extension to our curriculum here at Winnetka. Um, so just backing up a little bit, some of the, the key items, things that we're working on in the moment is getting ready for building the schedule for next year and, um, getting students thinking about that. So our timeline is, we're in the works developing it, Bill has to finalize some things tomorrow during principals' meeting, um, some of those dates. And so next month I can give you those exact dates, but things start to kick off pretty quickly when we get back in January, um, and the ball will just keep rolling from there. So as you can see from that timeline, we're just really prepping for that. Um, we, I mentioned last month that we finished up with our embedded PD for trimester one, which really sets the stage for the rest of the year and, and rolling out our, our school growth plan. So I'm excited in January and February to share that work with you, how that all came together, how we're going to tie that into Portrait of a Learner. Um, I know there has been some specific questions from the board around how are we assessing Portrait of a Learner? So we're really like digging into that right now. We have a variety of ways that we're doing that. As I mentioned, the school growth plan is tying into, you know, specific elements of the portrait. Um, but in particular, and, and at some point in the near future, I'll share the document with you. But Aliyah Raymond, who's one of our, um, English teachers, is going for her CAGS program. And, um, for one of her projects is she's developing a rubric that as we started to, as we're working together on it, we've recognized that it really lends itself not only for a rubric to help students, um, in assessing students as they progress through the four years here, but it's also turning into a portrait of an educator as well. So staff can use a portion, a version of this rubric to help self-assess and, um, develop their own needs assessments based on some of the elements that we are really trying to target for our Portrait of a Learner. So we're really excited about how that's taking shape, but it's, it's taken time, and, and we'll get there. And as soon as we have a more polished draft, we'll share that with all of you as well. So, um, making really great progress, so I'm proud of that. But certainly, like I said, take a look at that data. If there's anything else in the future you would like me to share or share it in a different way, I'm happy to do that. But that's it, thank you.
Um, question, do we have any new, um, any new courses of study that are coming up?
So, yeah, so what I mentioned, so one of the things that we, if I think I'm understanding your question, the new courses that we're offering next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we went through a variety of those, and, um, for a variety of reasons, we landed on accepting one new proposal for next year. Um, and that's the collaborative family and consumer science class.
Okay.
So much like the collaborative PE class that you've heard about, we did a presentation on. Nicole Douglas is, um, working on one for family and consumer sciences. So it's just, it's gonna be, it's so cool. And she's been working really closely with some area high schools as well to sort of get a sense of how they're implementing things. So she met with, um, Dover, we're gonna meet with Exeter. She's worked really closely with Brandon and Olivia in their program. And so, so it's really a collaborative effort, and it's been really fun, and I think she's gonna have a really good time rolling that out next year.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah, and we, I think we're gonna expand it a little bit too. Um, I, Brandon and Olivia are really excited to offer more of those unified classes. And so as time goes by, we might see more of that.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for Donna?
Well, and tied to the unified, the unified is having their alumni basketball game this Friday at two thirty or three o'clock, so.
Oh, that'll be great.
That's a good one.
So, um, so there's a lot of alumni coming back.
He does get, he usually does.
You always get your butt kicked.
This is the alumni, so.
Oh.
This is alumni.
Oh, I'm so glad, it'd be you. Come on, Trish, you gonna play?
After I get my second hip replaced. Then I'll be back.
From the sideline.
That's it, I love it. Thank you so much, Donna. Alright, it is now, oh, way past, um, no more public comment, I don't see any, so we'll close public comment at seven twelve. Uh, finance report, Matt? Our favorite.
Yes. Good evening. Um, so we have included both the, um, fiscal year data expenditure and revenue, um, reports on board docs. Um, but I do just wanna note a few items on the report. Um, so as I've previously, um, reported, uh, we are over budget on the vocational tuition account. That's, um, that's by eighty-three thousand dollars, and that's due to, um, increased participation and tuition rate, um, for SST. Um, additionally, um, you'll note in the grounds repair line item, um, we're over budget by, um, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that's, that is, um, expected. Um, that's the accessible, um, pathway installation, as well as tennis resurfacing projects, um, that we, um, had previously looked to use the building trust for, but are now utilizing the, um, you know, operating budget and then potentially, um, the fund balance retention fund, depending on how we progress through the school year. Um, I'll also note that health insurance is over budget by two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, again, that's expected, um, as we had under budgeted that account by three hundred thousand dollars, um, uh, with the ability to utilize the, the healthcare expendable trust. Um, and then finally, our special education, um, um, budget, as well as our other trans, student transportation budget are both over budget by two hundred and five thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars respectively. The, um, the other transportation is McKinney-Vento Transportation, that's for our homeless and foster student population. Uh, however, I will note that we, we are under budget in a number of areas. Um, our overall special education department is actually, um, under budget currently, um, by, um, just under three hundred thousand dollars. Um, we have, uh, the, the remainder of our benefits accounts i- is showing positive balances as well as some other smaller accounts. So at this point, we're, we're currently able to absorb these, these, um, overages. Um, however, that, as you know, this is something that we continue to monitor as we go through the school year. We can have unexpected, um, you know, special education costs or other, um, unanticipated costs that may, um, come into play. Um, at which point, we would, um, utilize those levers that, that I just referenced, the, the expendable trusts or fund balance retention, um, to, to cover, um, any deficits. So, um, that is where we stand currently for this current school year. However, I do wanna note, um, our budget for FY twenty-six. Um, so the budget committee has, um, completed their review of the proposed FY twenty-six budget. Thank you to, uh, Trish for, uh, sitting in on, uh, the extra budget. Budget meetings, I know she may not have willingly volunteered, uh, but.
I did, she did, she jumped at it.
I do, I do appreciate it because there's a, there's a lot of, um, a lot of documentation, a lot of analysis, a lot of paperwork to review. Um, and you have to hear from me, a fair amount. So, um, I, I am happy to, to report that the budget committee has unanimously recommended both the proposed budget, operating budget, as well as the proposed warrant article for our full, um, roof replacement, um, project. Um, so there will be a budget public hearing, um, on January fifteenth. Then the deliberative session is scheduled for February sixth. Um, and then a, a, at which point, once we, um, complete those meetings, the, um, our member communities will vote, um, at ballot on March eleventh, um, at both, at our town and district elections. So that is the, uh, kind of the schedule for our, um, budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody questions for Matt? Thank you, as always, for making it understandable, I guess, this, you know, you summarize it to me, I appreciate it.
I will note that Bill has some items on the agenda that will, uh.
Gonna mess it up?
May cause some additional expenditures to the, uh, to the report, which I will report out on in future meetings.
I love it, thanks, Matt.
But he just say we can absorb things.
That's right, we can, there we go. Uh, your facilities report is in there. Um, our next one continuing, um, is our, uh, school board goals. So we have proposed ones here, and I know, um, Tamara, you had some ideas that you wanted to bring forward?
Yes. Would you like to do these first and then?
Hmm?
Did, did you wanna go through these first or?
I mean, we've all, I mean, we've all read these, so it's like, I think if you've got things that you would like to.
Okay. Well, actually, um, it was wonderful, um, to hear from Donna this evening because, um, my, um, um, my hope is that we can put together language that will, um, codify our support, um, for, um, actually, I wrote way too much. Uh, but just, um, this is, this, this helps me stay organized when I present. Um, basically, I, I wrote down, um, something, uh, very quickly, um, as a goal. And I realize we're almost to two thousand twenty-five at this point. But to support the pursuit of improved academic outcomes in general education via comprehensive student growth assessment evaluation methods. And that's kind of what we're talking about doing at this point. Um, champion initiatives that emphasize growth-oriented, equitable, and holistic student assessments, utilizing the Portrait of a Learner framework. And, um, I think I, I was, um, just very conscious of the report outs, wonderful report outs we've gotten about Portrait of a Learner. I'm just really excited about them. And, um, I saw in the, in our packets that we had, um, and I know it's, it's, it's probably because of licensure and, and one of them, but there were, um, a couple dozen pages about, um, policies and practices we can follow to assess educators. And I just want to make sure that, uh, we, uh, do, do, do diligence, that's a mouthful, uh, for our students and find ways to support, um, uh, assessing growth, that growth for our students. And, uh, it's just, it's, it's nothing too, um, specific, just from the board perspective, that, um, we, uh, stay, uh, uh, present and, um, help guide any, um, furthering of those, um, outcomes. The only action I see us really, um, needing to do around this would be just to continue to foster, um, a culture of feedback and growth that supports, again, identifying any gaps in current evaluation methods, ensures accountability, and with receipt of regular reporting, uh, follows that assessment is not viewed in judgment, but is an opportunity for learners' growth improvement. So, it's kind of taken a, um, uh, uh, thousand-foot, um, level because I, as, uh, I'm not a teacher, and, um, I, uh, I don't feel it's appropriate to suggest any sort of, you know, minutia in how, how it's managed, um, that's left up to the professionals. But I do love the idea of us being actively involved and engaged in that support. So, that's, um, you know, I'm happy to take any feedback you might have, ask any questions. After listening to the presentation this evening, we might wanna tweak some, um, words, just, uh, feedback is good.
No, it is, appreciate it, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or additions, subtractions to? So we have our, the, the one that we have is, you know, our goal one is proposed, which is the new goal. So Tamara, I guess I'm asking, like, for where you got, you know, you've presented this. Is it in?
It could be a goal number four.
Number four?
She suggested it be an additional.
Additional goal, okay.
I do like that this goal is kind of tying into Portrait of a Learner because we don't have that, um, mentioned specifically in our goals. And, um, I think it would be beneficial to tie that in Portrait of a Learner to our goals.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I love the fact that we've got, you know, we're focusing on, um, communication, um, uh, continuing to develop and foster our culturally rich, um, our culture, I should say, and, um, just recognizing the work that we do, our teachers do and community. So this is just a, more of a, of an academic slice, uh, and additional. And, and again, I was, I was just hoping that we might want to signal our support in that area because I didn't see, nothing really popped out. because I didn't see, nothing really popped out at me looking at the-
Because I think like the goal three, where it, you know, it's committed to recognize the valuable work of our teachers and providing the opportunity to hear their work and accomplishments of our students. And it's just, I think, I don't know whether it's to maybe expand on that one or to add another one, but it seems like it's it's very similar. But yet, I get your point that you want it to-
I want it to go beyond the general scope of of student, I mean, just general support, given though all the work that was done-
Yeah.
-around the academic and the Portrait of a Learner piece. And I think it kind of ties in with our communication endeavors to communicate to our community what is happening academically and how we are taking responsibility for the growth of all of our learners. Again, this is, these are, these are things that are perhaps important to me personally, but as a, I think as a public school, you know, those sorts of things are-
I think they're important. Donna, you mentioned that soon you'll have some of those goals, like January?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hope I could present that to you in January. So my thought might be to see that final piece because I I think it very much, to your point, addresses some of those pieces of how are we looking at student growth in these different areas? And and kind of mesh those together at that point. I don't I don't know how the rest of the board feels. My thought is there is a a natural connection to these pieces. We had hoped that it was going to happen a little sooner and and I I think it's important to do the work right, and so it's taken a little more time and I know you-
I totally agree. And I tried to frame this in with being specifically unspecific, if I may.
I agree.
And it's sort of, I kind of like the way it 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 could potentially cover whatever comes to the plate.
That's true.
Right? That's that's why I framed it this way.
Yeah.
So Meredith, are you saying, suggesting that maybe we wait for the January meeting, see if Donna has, and we could hash it through and maybe February come up with, is that finalized?
Well, or or January. I mean, I think you could do it, could do it in January. You'll have the information, I mean, they'll be presenting, but you'll have information in board docs the week before. You could potentially workshop pieces, maybe start the meeting a little earlier and do a workshop session to kind of finalize language. I know everyone is just kind of seeing this today.
Oh, I've had it a while.
But that might give people time to kind of review both those pieces. And then I I think you're right, it's it's, it doesn't bind us to anything specific, right?
Other than supports.
Correct, correct. And and it and it affirms the commitment that we've made to this Portrait of a Learner goal. So I don't have a strong feeling, but I'm just suggesting that because those are both coming up, it might help people kind of cement those ideas and-
Yeah, and I I, sort of a side note, I love the idea of like an individualized learning plan. And I mean, that that would always sort of be my my ultimate, in that we can we can get to that point for our students. But, you know, I I feel like the Portrait of a Learner allows us that opportunity. So anyway, that was, that's just a little side note. But yeah, I mean, what whatever whatever is the pleasure of the board, this is just something I wanted to present. I, like I said, I've had it for several months, but I think we've we haven't had really as an opportunity as a entire board to-
To be together, yeah.
Together. And the fact that it 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 dovetails nicely with what's coming in January, then perhaps we can work on something together.
Anybody have any strong opinions other than that?
No, I mean, January, I think, would be fine. It would be good to, that, and maybe something can be worked in either, no, we were gonna meet before the meeting in January or?
I don't even know what, let me just look at the calendar.
I mean, just so we can finalize. I mean, we could start working on integrating-
That would be my thought, so you're ready to-
Do a work session at six and have it done and and be done, if that's possible.
I keep trying to just like add some of this into what we already have, but I do agree that this is like a fourth component here.
Yeah.
That would be a fourth goal.
Yep.
And I like it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Tamara.
So that's the public hearing night, so you're meeting already starts at six?
Yeah.
So I don't know if earlier is feasible for all of you, but certainly you could look at an another day or-
I guess-
Well, I mean, can we just add this as a fourth one and approve it tonight?
That's what I'm-
Can we do that? I feel like you're just kicking the can down the road.
I think, you know what, I I was just, I was literally just gonna say that, that it's, that what she's written at the top here as a fourth goal, I think, could very easily be adopted and it would be, it would include anything that could come up, that you would be bringing up in January.
I think it's broad enough as a goal, but if you start to like define objective and like specific action items?
Then it becomes more than a, more of a, not not a board goal, it's a specific-
That's a bit more of an action plan.
It's like a blueprint.
Right, and I don't, yeah.
I don't wanna wade into that.
I'd like, yeah, I, you know what, I wouldn't mind taking a motion that we accept Tamara's as a fourth goal and move on.
Right. And in the future, we could flesh it out a little.
Yeah.
Sure.
And I know, and again, I I don't wanna get into wordsmithing, but-
Please.
I'm just concerned how some people may view the term general, general education versus special education, just based on how we always talk about it, so somehow outcomes in-
Yeah, one we could teach that out.
Education.
Education.
How would we just say outcomes?
Outcomes in education.
Academic outcomes, improved academic outcomes.
Yep. There we go. I like that.
Oh, I love it. Via comprehensive student growth assessment.
Yep.
I was trying to leave my special education hat over there and not-
But no, I mean, like you said, individual learning plan, I mean, also, you should have individual learning.
So academic outcomes, and just leave it at that, right?
That actually reads very well.
That does sound good.
Should it be, should it be and champion initiatives?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just make it one, champion and, yep.
Thank you. Smith away.
All right.
So it would just be like the Winnicott Board Will, kind of like all the other ones?
Right, support pursuit of.
Yep.
Or that pursuit of.
Oh, good call. Yep.
Yep.
I think that sounds great.
Yeah, we got a motion?
Sweet. How do you wanna say the motion, like motion to approve the proposed goals with the-
Addition of the goal number four.
The added changes?
Yeah.
And then read off what we've decided is for tonight.
Yeah, I know the public isn't looking at this, so I'll just read it in for the record, but it says, the Winnicott Board Will support the pursuit of improved academic outcomes via comprehensive student growth assessment evaluation methods and champion initiatives that emphasize growth-oriented, equitable, and holistic student assessments utilizing the Portrait of a Learner framework.
Bingo.
Yep. Sounds great.
Works for me.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five Winnicott School Board Goals with the suggested amendments?
Yeah.
Amendment four.
With a with a added four. Thank you, Tamara, for that. And then do I have a second?
Thank you. Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications Committee update?
Quick update. Last month, we were able to, a first major achievement, put together a community holiday calendar, which incorporated all of our SAU schools into one comprehensive calendar.
Nice.
It was mentioned in one of our meetings to start maybe incorporating some other community events, as well as SAU events. I know in Hampton Falls, our rec commission, our library, and our school are trying, our elementary school are trying to do the same, where we're getting one calendar with everything that's happening in Hampton Falls. So it was brought up that we should do that for our SAU and the communities, for our stakeholders that may not be in the school. So we'll be meeting next month to begin working on our real key initiatives, which would be establishing a email communication setup, which would make the process for submitting stories for our communication forum or for our upcoming joint SAU quarterly newsletter that we're gonna be working on. So we're trying to do that in the new year, along with the newsletter, the community event calendars. And we'll be formally establishing our committee goals. Any thoughts or suggestions you may have, always welcome. And I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting this and believing in this new idea that we're kind of bringing to the table, and we look forward to getting the ball rolling in the new year.
I love it.
So it was nice that we could get one thing off the ground, and I was really happy when that calendar came out. It wasn't really a big thing, but we did, and you know, when you've got four or five-
But it is a big thing, exactly, when you've got that many moving parts.
Moving parts. So when that all came together, I was like, there we go, it's one calendar, and now we're off to the races, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, I appreciate your hard work on it, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
It's been great. Thank you. Awesome. New business, we have the resignation of our, uh, school district clerk, so I just need a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll move that we accept the resignation of the former town, well-
Shirley Doherty? Yep.
Yes, Shirley Doherty.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks, Zoe.
Thanks, Zoe.
Merry Christmas. Have a great break.
Merry Christmas.
Alrighty, take care. Um, I will say I have spoken to, I know a couple clerk in Hampton and the assistant clerk in Hampton, and they were both gonna be thinking about it, talking about it, so we wanted some more information.
Yeah, so it, the board does get to appoint someone to fill that position, and we would need to do that at your January meeting because the filing window opens at the end of January for open school official positions, so officers and board members. So if you have ideas of people, certainly spread the word. If someone is interested, they can reach out to the school board chair or to our office for more information.
So could we just, could you briefly recap what that position does? It is, it's securing our ballots for?
So initially, the the clerk is the person who is responsible for overseeing filing for school district positions. So for school board seats, that's the person you go to 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 submit those forms. The school district clerk also takes the minutes at your deliberative session.
Okay.
And yes, is typically present on voting day.
So this is separate from our town clerks?
That's correct. In some, in some communities, the same person does both jobs,
Okay.
but they are two distinct positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Meredith, do I understand that the person needs to be a resident of Hampton because this is where the school is?
I do not believe that is the case. Yeah.
I think it can be anybody in the district.
Correct, any of our districts, because Winnicott is the cooperative.
I know, well, I'm just thinking of when, since I'm not from Hampton, when I signed up to run for the Winnicott Board, I had to come to Hampton.
Because she was the clerk.
Because she was a-
Because she was the clerk.
Oh, that's why, okay.
Okay.
It's because she was the Hampton clerk, that's where she was.
Oh, okay. That makes sense now.
Yeah, that's where you'd find her to sign up for the Winnicott thing. Say, it was the Seabrook Town Clerk.
Then you would go to Seabrook.
And does it have to be a town clerk?
No, no.
Be any-
Anybody.
Oh, that makes sense now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know that either. I kind of always assumed it was the Hampton Town Clerk that kind of was the default clerk for us. Oh, that's interesting.
I think that that has been the case for some time, but it's not-
Well, yeah, that's probably why I thought that.
It's not an obligation.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Title one budget.
Yes, title one funding and staffing. So I I think we made the board aware last year that we received, or New Hampshire as a whole, received less federal title one funding than it had in the past. And so that resulted in reductions to each district. And as we've sort of hit this point in the year and looked at what we had remaining that was considered carryover balance from last year, we've included this memo and I'll let, I'll let Principal McGowan explain to you where we stand.
So, yeah, through the grant funding through title one, we've always been able to fund at least one and a half, if not up to two instructives. Last year, we received just over two hundred thousand dollars. And then the initial allocation that we received this year was significantly reduced, so we only received fifty-eight thousand four hundred and three dollars. Now, as mentioned, that we did have carryover funds. We were able to move all of those funds that we didn't use, but that was only an additional forty thousand dollars. So the current allocation I have this year is just under one hundred thousand, ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. That, with that funding, there's no way for me to continue staffing the title one program the way we have right now with, which is one point six full-time equivalents. So in order to maintain that, we would need to have an additional fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that would have to come from the operating budget to fund the part-time teacher that we have currently in place. Where does that funding come from? You know, clearly, this was not budgeted this year. We did not expect the amount that the title one funding was reduced. But I do have a clerical position that we did not fill this year. One of our assistant principals, admin assistant, retired this year. We had not initially been able to fill that. I did move some staffing around as far as my admin assistant. Assistant has been moved up there to take care of the two assistant principals. Not that it's ideal, because I still need to get somebody back down there, but for this year, we've been able to have things working pretty well, that I would not fill that position, and I would use that funding and transfer it over to cover the title one part-time position. Still doesn't cover the full amount, but I believe that to maintain that program this year as it is, we do need that person in there. We have a hundred and three students and that, those, that classroom is staffed all blocks, six blocks a day. Next year, I do not believe that we will be able to get much more than the fifty-eight, sixty thousand dollars, if even less. So we will definitely have to take a look at how we restructure some of the services that we have now through the bridge program, through the targeted assistant program, that will still be able to support these students, but we will clearly work on how that restructuring would work for next year. But this year, we have things in place that, right now, the students would suffer mostly if I did not continue that part-time position.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll have a hundred and fifty thousand. How much are we still short after that? We have to get up to two hundred thousand?
No, no, so it's essentially, right now, I am short of just under the fifty-two thousand dollars.
No, but you're saying you're gonna use that from the clerical position?
Correct.
Correct.
And with the ninety-eight thousand, that's about one fifty, almost exactly.
That, that covers us.
That covers the one point six for the rest of this school year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And then is the budget gonna be modified for next year, like, or are we not gonna?
So, so this position sits outside of your operating budget, right?
Oh, okay, who's normally funded.
It's because it's funded through the grants. So we we anticipate that, because we're not going to have those title one funds, that there would be a reduction related to that, and we would look at other ways to provide those services and supports to students.
Okay. So we're we're gonna not hire for the clerical position so that this position-
For this year.
For this year, so that this title one position can be maintained.
Correct.
Just 'cause I'm like a little worried, two twenty, two oh five, seventy-five, eighty-five, we're over in a lot, and then to like go over now again. So I guess we would just have to be committed, we're definitely not filling the clerical position.
Correct.
No, yeah, that will not happen.
Okay.
And those are title one funds, so that's that's separate from special education.
Correct, correct. It's target support for reading and mathematics assistance.
Correct.
Yeah. So- Right, right. So, and not even five oh four, so I'm just thinking, there's, there isn't really a way to tag federal special ed funding because it doesn't apply.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's separate, and that is-
There are separate buckets, yeah.
And we have to keep them separate.
Right, right, okay. Just sometimes that that's a lot for, I think, our taxpayers to kind of take in.
Absolutely.
Right, so it's, I, it may be worth noting, you know, during during budget season, how that, or just reemphasize it.
Sure.
That that's, that's something that, with less money coming from Concord and less money coming from Washington, but the need there, the need doesn't go away.
Right. Yeah, so through the title one program directly, next year, we anticipate that we'll be supporting a smaller number of students with title one funds, right? Because we're seeing that reduction.
Right.
But there are still students who are gonna need support. So title one, you know, can only be used for, right, you have to prioritize
Right, exactly.
and use title one funds for- And use title one funds for, uh, the, that subset that is most in need, um, for eligibility under title one, and then we have to fill sort of that next layer,
Sure.
um, with the other supports we have with.
And I assume this is across the SAU, are all the schools?
Reductions in title one, yes, um, yeah, we've seen those funds are eliminated, um, in, in one of our districts and, um, reductions in, in others.
Any further discussion? And can I get a motion, you want a motion to approve the plan, basically?
Correct, correct.
Or could I get a motion to approve a plan as stated?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan regarding the title one funding and staffing as provided.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, athletic revenues?
So, um, currently, uh, the proposal is to, um, eliminate the admission fees that we now charge students and adults, uh, to, uh, football and basketball home games. Um, we only charge admission fees for those two sports, uh, football and basketball are the, all of the sports we don't. Um, most of the people that attend those games are our students that come to school, and then, um, either the parents and or family members of the players. So, you know, clearly, we wanna advocate for our students, advocate for the community, um, through the budget process, the community does support our budget as far as funding these activities. Um, so our plan and proposal is to eliminate those, uh, one, uh, because again, why are we picking those two sports? Um, and also, in some of the games that when we have low turnouts based on the game we're playing on the night or the week, it is, that we still need somebody that we have to pay for as far as, uh, budget-wise, uh, to cover those games, to collect those tickets. So on average, we receive about ten thousand dollars a year, um, through rece- through the gate receipts for both those sports. Uh, seventy percent is primarily from football, uh, the other thirty percent is from basketball. Um, on average, we probably, um, pay out, um, about a thousand dollars each season, a total of two thousand dollars just to pay staff members to collect those. So our net profits probably about, you know, net revenues probably about eight thousand dollars. With the basketball, um, you know, boys and girls, I mean, clearly, the boys attract a larger crowd, so about three thousand dollars, about two thousand is from the boys, and the other thousand is from the girls, so, um, and, uh, that was for last year, this year, we've had two home games, uh, the girls played last Friday, uh, their revenue from that game was ninety-eight dollars, uh, the boys played on Monday, and their revenue from that was two hundred ninety-eight dollars. Um, so, um, some schools still continue to charge, I mean, some schools don't, um, no charge, I mean, Portsmouth, as far as one of the air schools locally, Portsmouth does not charge for any of them. Uh, some just charge for football, as I indicate, um, some also charge for hockey, we don't charge for hockey, um, and some also charge for wrestling, but we don't charge. So it's, you know, from an equity standpoint, why are we just picking those two sports? So, uh, you know, our proposal is to eliminate that, I know it may be difficult to do it this year because we do count it as revenue for this year, so I'm not sure what the impact that would have on the budget from this year as far as how we propose it, um, so, um, it's something that, if we can't do it for this year based on that, something that we would institute next year. Um, with that said, we were still, um, charged for the Exeter games and some of the larger games, I mean, if we have any playoff games, those fees are collected by the NHI double A, so we don't need to worry about that.
Any thoughts?
I mean, what if we just, um, waived the fees for students, like Winnicott students would go for free and then out of town people and community members would pay? I mean, it's three dollars or something, right, for the football?
It's, it's one dollar for students and three dollars for, um, adults, and I'm not sure what that breakdown is, you know, for different things.
Adults.
I mean, I thought all the people collecting money were volunteers in the booth.
Oh, they get paid.
Oh, they get paid?
So if you waive the, I think, I think if you waive the student portion of it, you're gonna be waiving a big part of that, so now we're paying, I think, I don't think it's.
Yeah, what does the ten thousand dollars go to?
Goes back into revenue.
It's part of your revenues that offsets your.
Just into the athletic budget, basically?
No, it's just part of your total revenues that offsets your taxpayer expenses, so that is an impact.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay.
Would, um, how would this affect the arts?
Right, 'cause, uh, that's what I was thinking, we pay a good amount for the plays, uh, like ten dollars a person.
It would affect what? So, the fees that we collect for the music programs and those, those go back to the music program through the student activities.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I paid four dollars in Wyndham last weekend.
It looks like most people charge.
Five, five dollars in Ashaw.
But, 'cause there's eleven under football, basketball, hockey that all do charge, you know.
From a standpoint of saying, why are we just picking these two sports, though, it does seem a little silly that we charge for these two sports and nothing else, and it is such a nominal fee that I, I understands, like, for our communities and stuff to not have charges, or what if you have a student on that team and you wanna go to every game, and you wanna say it's only three dollars, but three dollars sometimes times however many games.
And to bring a whole family in, yeah.
And bring, yeah, the, the, yeah.
Well, and I, and I, and I look at things like, you know, the field hockey, who, you know, they get a gr- big crowd, they've got, they've had such a great team for the last several years, you know, they've got a lot of people on it.
Sure. And there's nothing.
We don't charge for that, I think there's a, it's. I'm in, I'm of the, I'm of the, of the mindset of not charging because I just think it's, again, you know, it's community, it's the school,
Same.
It's always like, I always go back to hockey, you know, we pay for kids to play hockey and we like go to the tournaments and then they charge us to watch our own kids play.
Yep. Right.
And I'm sitting here and I'm like, I'm not, why am I, why am I paying to watch my kid play football when I'm already paying my taxes?
Right.
So, and I do, and I do have an issue, I, I, I just think it, it leaves that bad taste in your mouth when it's just those two sports and nothing else,
Yeah.
because there are other ones that, that draw crowds also, so.
Sure. It would be easy to say too, I mean, this just goes into our operating budget, I mean, if it went right back into the sports programs, I'd say, why can't we just collect donations? And then it goes right back to the team, but if this is just going into the operating budget, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars at the end of the day.
In the twenty-five million dollar budget, or whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't feel like this is big enough to really, um, be too concerned with, in my, in my opinion. Because I agree with, I agree that I don't think we should be charging just for those two, we charge for them all or we don't charge at all.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I think that, I, I appreciate that from the equity perspective, I think one of the challenges is the field hockey field, there's not really a separate entrance to have someone sort of set up to do that, to collect for a field hockey game as opposed to.
Right. And it doesn't make sense to charge for it either.
But then you'd have to get somebody to sell the tickets down there too.
Your access to. Oh, correct, right, but I'm saying, like, football, it's like the whole stadium that is open or you have to come into the gym, so there, because of those use,
Right.
Right.
it's a little bit more designed to be able to collect those fees than the other sports.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Um, just.
Yeah, but it's not to say that we can't, because you could get, I mean, we could set it up, you know, but you have to go through, there's ways.
You could. And you could sneak through the woods to get out of the.
And we've all, we've all snuck into the football games.
Well, yeah, people get in for free anyway.
Right.
You know, I don't know, um, if there's any opportunity, well, there is always opportunity, um, but I, I love the football game where the students get in if they bring, if they have food.
Food, right.
Mm-hmm.
You know, are, are there opportunities there to, for the community to s- to support in another way?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, that isn't cash out of your pocket, um, and might we, I don't know, just try to signal some type of service project for the kids to come up with?
That's a good idea.
You know, what, what, what do you need, you know, what, this is this winter, you know, should people, can people donate that out?
Bring in a scarf, yeah, exactly.
I don't know, it just seems like, you know, there's, there's opportunity there to.
Yep.
Bring a pair of mittens rather than three dollars, that's a good idea, Tamra, at certain games.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, for sure.
I mean, we had a food drive at some of the games.
Right, we have the food drive every year, they do that for the, you know, the, the soup kitchens and whatnot, so I think that is a, that is definitely a possibility, um, I think at this.
Or I think teams should be able to, groups could sign up to collect donations.
Uh-huh.
Oh, that's a good idea.
In lieu of the fee, like if you are in the marching band, if, I mean, they can't 'cause they're at the football game, but whatever group.
Mm-hmm. Right, the cheerleaders are at that, yeah, yeah.
If the cheerleaders wanna staff it with their boosters, could they be allowed to collect donations?
It's like the community of, Tuesday night of the community of the world, so you can sign up for your, your game.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, or the band parents could sign up and they could raise the money towards their Florida trip or whatever, that costs a lot of money, I don't know.
Sure.
Sure, mm-hmm. Yeah, you could set up tables to that.
And it wouldn't be mandatory, but like, many people, like, who can afford it, they expect to pay three dollars, so they're gonna probably be fine giving three dollars
Yeah.
that would go to a student activity group or something.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea. Yep.
I don't know, it's just an idea.
I like that idea.
Both great ideas.
Yeah, I think at this point, I think what we'd, we'd like is probably just to either vote on keeping the, the charge or doing away with the charge, and then if we do away with the charge, then leaving it up to the school to decide how they want to, you know, whether it's to get donations per game, per, per team, whatever.
Per game. Sure.
But at this point, I think, um, what they're proposing is that, that we do away with it, so if anybody wants to make a motion on that, I would entertain that.
Matt, do you have any thoughts? On turning down revenue?
Exactly. Listen to us, and you're adding up and going in, how much is that? And we're waiving the fees.
I just give you an opportunity.
Yep.
Everybody gets a car.
This is gonna break us.
Yeah, I think from a, from an equity perspective.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So, I mean, from a, from an equity perspective, I, I think it's, um, positive to, um, to, to waive the f- the fees. Uh, that being said, of course, the board needs to weigh whether, um, that is worth, um, more so than receiving that revenue, which does have an impact on, um, real estate tax assessment, so, um, and ultimately, that's, that's how, the philosophy of the board and how they wanna approach that, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So we're talking, if it, if we bring in ten and we're paying out at least two, we're talking less than eight thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve waiving the admission fees for the Winnicott football and basketball regular season home games.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can I ask one of clarification?
No.
Yes, sure, yes you may.
Uh, or, are, are, um, you heard Bill say, we're sort of in process already for this year, so would this be effective for next year, or are you thinking to start immediately?
I'm sorry, I have to.
Next year.
Because we're already through, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, of, we've already collected sixty-four eighty-one this year for football, so, you know, based on last year's, um, basketball,
At those.
Football.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
it's roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars that we would, well, thirty-five hundred because we already collected some.
Yeah, that we would.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it'd be probably a loss right now, if we do it now, about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Everyone else.
Yeah, I, I now just recommend. Perhaps waiting until next year, because we do estimate those revenues.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
Yep.
Um, and it'll give us, this Bill and his team, the opportunity to maybe propose a plan, some of these creative ideas for next year, because once you make it this, once you put it in effect, it'll be hard to then ask for donations, so, I think it'd be prudent to wait until next year to do so.
Bring it back.
Right, yeah.
Sure.
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 Yeah. So to start in the fall of two thousand twenty-five?
So I'll make a motion to approve the elimination of admission fees for Winnicott football and basketball regular season home games beginning in the tw-. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yeah. 'Cause I know Exeter is discussing this right now as well.
Thank you. Are they? Okay.
I'll be interested to see what they end up doing.
Interesting, alright, so, we're gonna be going into non-public after this, so, uh, future meetings, we have a Winnicott School Board meeting Wednesday, January fifteenth. Winnicott Budcom Public Hearing is Wednesday, January fifteenth.
No, we're done.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock.
The public hearing is at seven o'clock.
Oh, the public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearings at seven.
Right, our school board meeting is at six, on the public.
Oh, okay, okay, board meeting six.
Alright, so then can I have a motion to go into non-public?
This is Nicole's thing.
Yeah, Nicole.
I have a motion for a roll call to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, A K, at seven fifty-seven P M.
Yes. Second then.
Thank you, roll call?
Roll call, yep, does it already plotter?
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn?
Yes.
Nicole Seaco?
Yes.
Tamale?
Yes.
And Trish Rokee?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on it.